I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting Wednesday, January 4th at 7:00 PM. The first agenda item is the continued public hearing from December 7th, Kevin Moss, case number 2022-0917 Churchill Road. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I watched the video in its entirety and filled out the Mullen rule with the town clerk.
Okay, great. Come on.
Should I approach, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
How are you this evening?
Good, very good. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, I'm actually going to keep this brief and simple for you folks. Based off of the findings and recommendation of my engineering firm, as well as the advice from counsel, I am withdrawing my application for a variance.
Okay.
I will work directly with the building official to make sure that we are within compliance as soon as humanly possible.
Okay.
I made an attempt to try and move the shed over the course of the weekend, but the ground being as wet as it was, I couldn't even get my dumpster out of there.
Need some frost.
So, as soon as it firms up or dries out, I'll give old buildings moved to have them when the required setbacks.
Great.
So, you got to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
If I may ask a question of the building official through the chair?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, with moving the coop and the shed themselves, is there any setback allowances that I need to worry about for the pen? It does not have a fixed roof. It's just a cage roof, so it's not actually a shelter. It's just a fence.
I'm unaware of anything. We have to, you know, double check that's in the zoning book, but I'm unaware of anything that says you can't have a fence within the area. There are a lot of fences up for your property lines for any use, but I'm not aware of what you think is allowed for a cage animal or something against the whole line.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up question. If the pen is attached to the structure, does that become part of the structure?
I don't know the answer to that.
If you could get some clarification for the applicant that way.
I'll try and get it.
We're not going in circles with this, just to make it clear.
I can try and get clarification on both of them.
If you don't mind.
No, I actually appreciate that.
Just want to make sure it's clear, that's all.
I'd rather have as crystal clear as I can get.
So, the applicant is looking to withdraw his application. Accept, entertain a motion to...
Yep. Before I do that, I have another question.
Oh, go ahead.
If he has a violation notice, correct? All right. If he withdraws without prejudice, what happens? Does he have a period of time?
He's still bound under the violation notice to...
But is he allotted some time to move this? I'd just like to have it clear when we leave, because obviously this...
Every case has its own set of circumstances, and if you can't get on the site to move the structure because of weather, climate weather, or mud, or whatever, you really can't get on the site to move the structure. So, I mean, you know, it's not something that can delay all the way through in the summertime. This needs to be done ASAP, as soon as the weather permits, whether the ground freezes or the ground dries out, whichever ways to get that done in a timely fashion.
Yeah. And the only reason I'm asking these questions is because we're here because a complaint got put in, so I don't want to be chasing complaints back and forth throughout the winter, so we have a clear understanding as to what our game plan is. It's going to make it easier for everybody involved.
No, I appreciate the due diligence.
Yep.
Okay, so, the applicant, this case is looking to withdraw.
So, I would make a motion to approve his request to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want a roll call with Johnny?
Yeah, we are. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ryan Foggit.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening.
You too. All right.
The next one's not until 7:15.
Right. Actually, we have a voucher here that needs to be signed. Is Lauren in the room? Yeah. How do you pronounce your last name? I don't want to butcher it.
It's Macagnano.
I was close.
One more time?
Macagnano.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Anything close is fine.
Okay. All right, we have to wait till 7:15 to open it up, because it was advertised that it would start at 7:15, and we can't start earlier than the way it was advertised.
That's a minute.
Yep. And we can get at least one set, maybe two sets of minutes. We have the minutes of September meeting. I think our staff cut it to everybody a few weeks ago. I don't know if it's been reviewed by everybody, but if not, we can take time to review it now. And we'll do the minutes for September 7th. John, are you ready to act on the minutes for September 7th?
Oh, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Are you run?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, accept the meeting minutes for the September 7th meeting as written, as read. Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to accept the minutes of the meeting on September 7th, 2022, as written. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ryan Foggit.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved as written.
Seven ten, we'll still get time for you if you want.
Okay, and we have the minutes for October. I'd like to do that.
October 5th?
Yes, October 5th, John. We actually had them last month, but we didn't act on them, because Mike wasn't here. We didn't have a full board.
Yeah, no, I remember that. It was down in the city area.
Did you say something?
Yeah, I did.
Nothing. It's not important, Mike. I'll make a motion for acceptance of the meeting on October 5th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bumbara, seconded by Mr. Palmer, to approve the minutes of October 5th as written. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ryan Foggit.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved as written.
Eleven.
Yep, we just have a few more minutes, and we'll start the next public hearing.
Did you see this thing from Jen?
Yes, yep. We did have a couple correspondence, or at least one correspondence, from our staff concerning the annual report. If everyone could review that, and then we'll vote to accept it or amend it at our next We also had a memo from our staff about the, she's been working on getting the forms for variances or special permits online. I, for one, haven't been online to try it out, but if everybody could do that, we can make a recommendation to her after our next meeting.
If everybody's fine with it, I would make a motion to accept her draft of the annual report, 2022.
Okay. Excuse me, I've got to leave at this time. Okay.
Yep.
All right, good luck with that. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer, to accept the annual report as written. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ryan Foggit.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Aye.
All right, and approved as written.
Still got two minutes.
Two minutes?
You want to...
Yeah.
We just need to acknowledge that, or that's all?
Well, I think if we can, we should probably give it a try. She's looking for recommendations if we could go online and give it a try.
Kevin, did you use that online permit?
Yes, I did.
How'd you find it?
Good. Actually, it was really easy.
Thanks.
Set.
Yep.
Our next agenda item is case number 2023-01, 31 Glenn Street. The date of the application is 12/12/2022. It was advertised in the Worcester Telegram Gazette and posted in the town hall, and it reads as follows. "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 on Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass., to hear the following application." Do my best with this, Lauren. "At 7:15, Lauren MacAdno is requesting a special permit in a VR Zone District pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3 and Appendix A, to place a temporary trailer on property located at 31 Glenn Street, Assessors Map 188, Parcel 9. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. It was advertised in the Telegram Gazette on December 21st and on December 28th." Would you like to join us at the table?
Sure.
You can take those two.
And we all have a copy of your application, but if you want to go through it with us and give us a little history, that would be great.
Well, Happy New Year to you all.
You too.
Thank you. No, we've read all of that. "We're requesting permission under zoning regulation Appendix A, Number 3, for temporary use of a trailer due to a fire."
Excuse me, sir. Just anybody this evening that's going to speak, just need to state your name and address, because somebody's taking minutes based off...
I understand. I'm Richard Macagnano. I'm Lauren's father.
Okay, great.
And I live at 6 Fruit Street in Milford.
Okay, great.
I have the zoning appendix here, and we assumed that we had the right, assuming was probably wrong, for temporary use of the trailer. But Mr. Fraser informed us that there's a two-year window in order to use that. We were out of the window.
We bought the property after two years, unfortunately. So, we just wanted to put a trailer there while rebuilding, because we, you know, we're going to be rebuilding the property.
We're going to rebuild the house on the property. And Lauren needed a place to live in the meantime. She's currently living in her mother's basement. So, we felt that we would be able to, according to this, we felt that we would be able to put the trailer on the property and use it for one year while we were doing the construction on the house. But as I said, Mr. Fraser informed us that there's only a two-year window that you can do that. We were just out of that.
Yeah, and I guess we missed that.
And I think also you were not the owner of the property when the fire...
We bought it afterwards, yeah, two years after, yeah.
That's correct. Yeah, but the owner of the property was deceased in the fire.
Yeah.
And then the property went into probate, and it was a very lengthy time since we made the offer on the house. It took six months in order to be, for it to go through probate, be approved by the courts, and...
It was like almost a year till it got in.
And we didn't expect everything to take as long as it did. So, we were running out of our window that we wanted to get in there and work. We lost a lot of time in that. By the time all the litigation was cleared up, the sale went through, and the two-year time period expired. We feel that no one used this privilege to put the trailer on the site, because the owner at the time of the fire was deceased in the fire, and none of the family members or anything really, you know, had any interest in the property whatsoever. So, nobody put a trailer there to use and consume that one-year period. We're out of the window, but we would like to have the benefit of that one-year timeframe to use the trailer while we're doing construction on the house. That's why we're here before you now.
All right.
We got pictures of the trailer.
We have some pictures. You know, I know we...
I know we got some of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have a lot of that. But what we...
Oh, the...
Yeah.
The damage is from a repo.
Oh, okay. Some of the other pictures.
So, I have three packages here, if you could share them. And what they do is they show the trailer. They show the trailer in relation, I got them labeled, in relationship to...
Yep.
Relationship to where the house is, and the pictures, you have to unclip them to go through it, I'm sorry.
I drove by the property, the trailer's for the most part behind the house.
Well, we put it in the inconspicuous place, plus we had an enormous dead tree. Actually, we had like two of them, but one terribly dead enormous tree, that if we put it in the driveway, I was afraid it was going to fall.
We're going to have it removed.
And we're going to have it removed, but again, we're way behind in our timeframe. So, and the reason we have it where it is, is for protection, for one thing, to keep it out of sight from the street, because I'm sure nobody wants to look at the trailer. And the pictures there show that we're 300 feet from one property line, and 200 feet from another property line, 400 feet from the property line in the back, and like 180 feet from the property line in the front. And the pictures show that you really, one, you can't see any of the neighbors' houses at all from where the trailer is located, and they can't see it. And what you can see of the trailer is very minimal from the street. So, we tried to put it in an inconspicuous place. We also tried to put it in a location where we can connect electricity and water to it as well, so...
What about storage?
And, excuse me?
What are you doing for storage there?
I don't know.
So, we're having it picked up by the...
Yeah, we're going to have, I talked to my regular subject caller, who's Harry Campisaw, and he recommended John Gibson, who works locally, and he would be able to do that. And it has a holding tank in it now, and it has provisions for the holding tank to be pumped. So, when it needs to be pumped, we'll have it pumped.
All right. Any board members have any questions on this application?
The reference to the two-year window?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what that is?
I did not see anything, and Mr. Fraser informed me of that and requested that we go through this process.
Yeah, he adds the zoning book to you, that's why I'm asking that question.
In Appendix A, Schedule of Use Regulations states temporary use of a trailer or mobile home because of loss of dwelling by fire or some other catastrophe for not more than one year.
And that's what I have here. I do not have anything that references the two-year. But again, if that's what Mr. Fraser says, you know, he's the man in charge.
And the reason why I'm asking that, Dan, is typically you have a two-year window for loss of use. And I did ask the building inspector about this when this application came in, and because, because if you look at, if you don't mind if I could ask the fire chief, he happens to be in the audience. Do you remember the date of that loss?
The fire?
Yes.
I believe it was November 10th.
Okay, November, so it was in November, because you reported November 20th.
I was going to say, it is November 20th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, when this application came in, I asked him the question because I was concerned about the two-year window, the loss of use, which is typical in zoning. And because they applied for a roof permit prior to that, November 10th, is what he was going by, that there was an active progress on the house. So, that kept the, they didn't lose that use, because after the two-year period, not they got to make a problem.
Right.
But what you just read, that you have a year from November 10th, 2020.
Right.
Where over a year past that.
Right.
Right. But they didn't, when did you purchase the property?
We closed on the property either the end of July or the beginning of August.
Of '22.
Just this last year? Yes, '22.
Do you think you could complete that remodel within 12 months?
I feel that we can. We have a pretty good plan as to how to proceed, and I feel that in the timeframe of a year, that we will be able to have enough done on the house to get a temporary occupancy, and then continue to work on the house and remove the trailer from the property.
You said a temporary occupancy. What do you expect to not have done?
The second floor. We'll have the first floor to complete it, and then have a kitchen, it'll have a bathroom, it'll have a bedroom on the first floor. And then the second floor, we anticipate putting a bathroom and bedroom on the second floor, and we won't have that completed within the year, at least I don't think we will. You know, I have my daughter, who's great at working, and I'm getting older, so, you know, I'm not as fast as I used to be.
Understood.
Yeah.
Any other board members, or John, do you have any questions?
Yeah, a question to you, Mike. And this is regards to the dates now. Say, for instance, the approval goes from tonight, that has a 20-day period before it goes out, of course, the town clerk. Does that date start for that one year at that date, or is it staying tonight on the 4th of January?
I would think we could condition it, John, to whatever date we're comfortable with.
Okay, all right. Other than that, I don't have any issues with what they're trying to do.
Yeah, because they will...
The answer to his question, though, would be the clock would start at the end of the appeal period.
Right.
Yeah.
If I can...
It's not going to be used between now and then, because I'm not going to be able to do any of the work to get it done, so that's what I'm asking.
Right.
Yeah.
The trailer is not connected. We don't have electricity to the trailer, we don't have water to the trailer currently. When Mr. Fraser called us and told us that we couldn't occupy it, we, all we did was level the trailer, so it stayed stable, and we stopped anything else that we had plans to do. So, we would need 20 to 30 days, maybe not that much, but we would start immediately to make those electrical and the water connections to the trailer. So, we still wouldn't be occupying it for, you know, if our timeframe started 30 days from now, we would be fine from that, or 20 days, or whatever the board felt that was reasonable.
I was going to say, if it gets approved...
We'll give you the benefit of the doubt at the start of the day that it is technically legally approved.
If it was to get approved, there's a appeal process as well, and it's not technically approved until the appeal period expires, which is normally about 30 days.
That would work in... Ron?
Mr. Chairman, what's the appeal period for?
For anybody that is contesting the decision. So, they have 20 days to appeal it, so then it would go to court. So, if they did anything within that 20-day period, they'd be working on their, at their own risk.
Okay. Granted, I'm new at this, but when someone has a tragedy like this, and it's wintertime, why are we, like, going over the top of not letting him do what he has to do?
Well, I'm not sure. Going over the top, that's a regulation that...
Yeah, but I mean, regulations are regulations, but there's always hardships and all this kind of stuff that we normally give to other situations, and I just don't get it.
I would agree with you if they were the owner at the time of the tragedy, okay, or the catastrophe, whichever way you want to word it. However, they buy it beware, for lack of a better statement.
Buy it beware of what?
They bought it knowing what the situation was, so it's not a hardship for them, full well what they were going into. So, if they...
How can you say that's a true statement, that until you get in there and start doing things? Right? Am I wrong, or am I right?
No, they should have reviewed the bylaws and probably before they purchased it.
And all I'm doing is responding to your statement about it being a hardship for the I'll find these pictures somewhere. It's right in here. This hasn't changed since the day they put their offer in, so they knew what, you don't have to go inside to understand that you're not going to live in that house.
Right. But isn't there something, when someone has a fire, you have a year to make it habitable?
You have a year to put a trailer temporarily for a year. You have a year to, to put a trailer temporarily for a year while it's being rebuilt.
And where are you at that?
We're late, we bought it after the year went up.
Oh, after the year.
So that's the problem.
Right, and they weren't the original owners. I agree, Ron, if, if they were the original owners, when the fire happened and whatever, things would have been a lot smoother.
And we understand that, but we're just trying to repair the house so it's habitable. And, you know, we had a plan going in, and the plan going in was to have temporary, a temporary place for Lauren to live while we were working on the house. Unfortunately, I didn't see that two-year thing, you know, I just felt that we could put a trailer on the site, use that to live in while we were working on the house. This is, that's the way it is. That's the hard facts of it, and that's why we're here today.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any other board members before I open it up?
It's just a process, we're going through, it's not done. There's going to be people that are going to speak for, against, however they're going to speak, because this is just part of the process. So all I was doing was responding to another member's question, that's all. So it's not a decision, it's just a response, that's all it is.
So I just have a couple of questions about the trailer. You said it has the tanks inside of it. Is that for gray water, for black water, or the separate tanks?
It has the tank that contains all the water, gray water--
Okay. Is that in the heated area, or is that underneath the trailer where it could freeze?
It's underneath the trailer.
Okay.
And the toilet that's in there, this is an interesting trailer. It's not a travel trailer, it's a destination trailer. Yeah. You can use the toilet too, so you can connect it to the water and flush it normally, like everybody else's toilet flushes. Plus, it has a valve in there, a shut-off valve, where you can use the toilet and then pour antifreeze, the RV antifreeze--
Flush it that way.
And it will flush in that manner. We're not entirely sure how we're going to do that yet.
I just don't want it to freeze up on you, the consideration--
But we are also, it's not currently in place, but if everything is approved, we're going to put an insulated skirt around the trailer and heat underneath of the trailer. And hopefully that will, we have some, we have some--
We've got some people--
Some ideas as to how to do this, and we've got some people that have done this before. And now we're using all our resources.
It would just be tough to get there, and we get a three-day cold snap, and everything's frozen up solid, and the tank cracks and something else, it just makes your life even worse, that's all.
All right.
I apologize when I jumped ahead of myself a little bit here. I'm informed by staff that all of the certified mailings have been returned. I should have mentioned that earlier. We've had no correspondence with the planning board, which occasionally they reach out to us with an opinion, their opinion. And then I just needed to introduce the members that'll be voting on this case, which is Mr. Palmer, Mr. Forget, Mr. Fitzpatrick, myself, and remotely, Mr. Bombara. Sorry, I should have said that 10 minutes ago. So--
Is this a zone thing?
Yes.
I've never seen this before, it seems somewhat interesting. And you are at home?
Ethan Kane.
Yeah.
Florida.
Oh, Florida.
Florida? I bet the weather's a lot better down there.
I'm sorry to say that it is.
Yeah?
Sorry.
If no board members have any other questions at this time, I'll open it up to the floor, and if there's anybody here that would, has any questions or comments, we just need you to identify yourself, name and address, and we'll open it up now. Ma'am? Go ahead.
Becky Callagher, 24 Glen Street. I'm 100% okay with the trailer there, and waiting for them to get everything fixed up there, that property looks a lot nicer. Welcome her as a new neighbor.
Oh, wow, thank you. Very nice.
All right, so noted. Is anybody else? Sir?
Well, I'm from Sutton, Mass. I own the property, 37 Glen Street. My daughter lives there, and I'm just concerned, basically, where are you going to put the septic? Because I don't know if that septic system is clear Title V at the time you purchased it, and it hasn't been, was put in around '94, I believe.
Yep, I think you're right.
And that's the last time it had a Title V.
I do not have the septic plants with me. I do have them, we've researched that. The septic system is Title V compliant, and--
They didn't win.
I did not bring them in with me.
Okay, but I'm just concerned about that, that's one--
It is Title V.
I have two other questions.
Yeah, but--
I don't think there's town water on that property.
There's a well.
Yeah, and it's that, the gentleman that was living there wasn't using it, so the water's got to be properly tested, because he'd come over and visit once in a while.
Probably like to test it.
He was bringing bottled water to live there.
We have all intentions of testing the well.
But I mean, those are the regulations, I think you have to meet before you can--
Get a building permit.
Get a building permit.
Yeah, we have all intentions--
And move into the trailer, I think, also.
All intentions of testing the well, as soon as we can get some electricity on the property to get the well pump running.
Right.
And we are not going to be using the septic system that's there for the trailer. The trailer has a holding tank, and we'll be pumping the holding tank.
You'll have to pump that, I got a travel trailer.
Yeah.
And I live in a campground for the summer.
Yeah.
And just my wife and I there for three days, it's full. And if you have company, you're going to be draining it every time you turn around, so--
We realize that, I'm also--
And we have an office trailer at the concrete plant that has two portable tanks on heat pads underneath, and that gets emptied twice a week.
Okay.
I'm also told my daughter she needs to join a gym, so she can take showers.
Yeah.
And drink a lot of bottled water.
Yeah.
You're going to pay for that.
Yeah, I think I am.
Anybody else that has any questions or comments?
We're supposed to answer.
Go ahead.
Ken Vincent, 23 Glen Street. Just want to know if, again, there was a tragic fire there, we want to make sure that the place checks out with smoke detectors and things like that, so--
Absolutely.
Right now, we're looking for a permit for the trailer. We will have smoke detectors in the trailer, there already is smoke detector--
And carbon monoxide.
And carbon monoxide, and we'll make sure that that all works. The trailer currently has both electric and gas heat provisions. So we're going to get going on the electric and hopefully not have to use the gas at all.
But we're still going to have smoke detector.
We're still going to have--
And carbon monoxide.
Going to have all that.
Take me to James's.
Mike?
Just a question for the fire chief. Would that require, because he's going to have to get a permit through the, assuming it's approved, through the building department, would that require an inspection for the smoking?
Quite honestly, it's more or less a trailer they bought. Anytime we've ever had a fire before, it's usually like a professional company that comes in with a trailer that's all re-inspected prior. So it's sort of a rare beast, so we're just going to have to work together and communicate on that.
All right, you'll work with the building commissioner? Okay, great.
The trailer that we bought was occupied all this summer, it was--
Indian Ranch.
Was at Indian Ranch. And it pretty much, it went from there, once made one stop and came, and came here. So it had been occupied, operating, running.
We did check all that.
We did check everything, everything worked, it's got circuit breakers, it looks like a house inside. So it's not something we dug up somewhere and--
No, no, it looks like a back model.
Yeah.
Anyone else would like to speak on this application? It's the board's pleasure, would you like to close the public hearing, or do you want further discussion? John?
So moved, so moved.
Okay.
Yeah, that's second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bombara, second by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Hinni.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ryan Forget.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed at 7:40. The board like to move forward with a decision tonight?
I would like to move forward with a decision, but I would like some conditions with that.
Absolutely.
One, the most recent thing that was brought up, I would like to see that the structure is inspected by the fire department to make sure it's compliant for smoke and carbon monoxide protection.
Okay.
Also, if we're going to give them a permit for a year, I would like to have a review at six months to see what the status of the project is.
Okay.
That's all, yep.
Okay. And there are things that are going to be required by the building commissioner for, to get a building permit, to do the remodel. You're going to have--
We're going to start back next, yeah.
We've already, we've already done that, we're on the second revision with the architect, and I hope to have the plans from him by the end of this week or the middle of next week, provided my daughter doesn't make any more changes. And then we'll be submitting that as soon as we possibly can to the building department.
All right, you'll need either an approved, approval for the existing septic system, or you're going to need a new design, if this--
Before we get occupancy to the house.
Before you get a building permit.
Right. Yeah.
And you'll have to have some type of water, whether it's a well or--
You may even need the water test to do it.
Yeah, right, I'm sure, I would think that--
No, but it may be a requirement for you.
Oh.
Just trying to tell you something, you're going to--
No, whatever we have to do, we're going to do.
Yeah, okay. So the permit, if approved, would be granted for one year, and you'd like a six-month--
Just a review, just to make sure that the project--
You want to do the review with the building commissioner, or with the applicant?
With the applicant, they could come back in six months.
Yeah, all right. So we understand that we're going, I guess winter's coming, and where--
Maybe not.
There may be some, maybe some delays due to weather.
We're doing the best we can to move forward in this project. And like I said, we got a late start. We didn't expect it to take as long as it did to close on the house, but we're just dealing with it.
Well, it sounds like you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
All right, it's coming, it's coming early.
Yeah, a lot of work.
We're happy with--
You got things in order.
And the approval would be for one year from the date of--
The expiration of the re-appeal period.
Of the appeal period.
Sometimes it could take us up to a month to get our decision, and then, once we get our decision, it gets signed, then it gets stamped in with the town clerk, then the appeal period starts. So it's not like tomorrow it's going to start, and 20 days later it doesn't work.
And you'll contact us now?
They'll, yeah.
So we'll just be waiting.
Community development will contact you and let you know.
And there may be some things you can do to help yourself with having your septic tested, or--
Yes.
We got plenty--
Having your well tested, that you could do that without a building permit.
Can we get the fire department in to check that stuff too?
I'm sure if you contact them, they'll work with you. Okay, any other conditions on this approval? John?
I'm all set.
Okay. Okay, so, did you already make a motion, Mike?
Yeah, you already made it, you--
Oh, this is just some notes I put, but--
Yeah, no, but those are the conditions.
Yeah.
Can you read it? Okay, make a motion to approve the application as submitted, ZBA number 2023-01, with the following conditions, that the application, the use of the trailer would be approved for one year at the end of the appeal period for the approved decision, for one year, with a six-month review, and also to make sure that the trailer is compliant with the smokes and CO detectors for the fire department.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
You want to--
The request is approved, and, aye, Dan Hinni.
If you want to keep one of the packets to keep with the file--
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I have one right here.
Oh, he has one there.
He has it.
The vote's up to you, Ronnie. Aye or no?
Aye. Ryan Forget.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay, so your request is approved. It normally takes about a month to get the decision written and, to the town clerk. And at that point, the appeal period begins. That's 20 days, and we'll get it done as quickly as we can, and good luck with that.
We have, we have stuff we need to do to get the trailer--
Sure.
--ready. Now, will we need to talk to Mr. Frazier and find out exactly what he's going to want before she moves in the trailer?
Definitely.
Okay.
He's the building commissioner, and that's his job.
Okay, so we'll check with him?
Yep.
And we'll take care of all of that.
Okay.
And in the six months, when you do the review, will we be notified to come in to see you, or--
Yeah, we can contact you, we're just, you know, we'd like to see it get done as soon as possible, would be good for you, good for the neighbors, good for--
Yeah.
For everybody.
For everybody.
The sooner the better.